Well, good evening. We'll call to order the June 23 regular meeting of the Mounds View School Board. I will note that this is the last meeting of what I think we can all as Minnesotans describe as an interesting and yes, at home, I'm using air quotes, "school year." So look forward to some year end updates and action over the course of our time together tonight. Start with item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. We'll roll call on attendance and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Present.
Danielson?
Present.
DeMay?
Here.
Glassheen?
Present.
Sager?
Here.
Westerman, present. Chair Weinhegen.
Present. Now we will move to item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Do you entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll take us to item 2.1, open forum, public comments. As a reminder, we have been taking those electronically and we've asked Sarah O'Rourke to share those.
Tonight, we have one public comment that has been submitted by Anna Fishlove, 535 Lake Summit Court, Shoreview, Minnesota, 55126. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Lennox. Thank you for the opportunity to share my comments regarding the important topic of institutional racism. First, I would like to thank the board for its willingness to engage in courageous conversations with students and families who have experienced institutional racism at Mounds View School District. This year, we have all been challenged to live outside of our comfort zone, given the challenges from the COVID-19 pandemic. I hope the school board will embrace this opportunity to challenge the status quo at Mounds View that has been rooted in institutional racism since its inception. In 2017, my family moved to Shoreview from the state of Florida with the hope of experiencing the high-quality education voiced by so many neighbors in the area. To our dismay, we did not share in the same experience. While we are not a family of color, we are ethnically diverse. I agree with the comments shared by the board that students and families of color do not have an educational experience that is racially diverse because of the homogenous group of tenured educators and management staff who create a learning atmosphere that is supportive of a homogenous group of students. I am hopeful that the board will identify new opportunities for creating a diverse learning experience in which all students and families, regardless of race, can experience a high-quality education. Thank you to the members of the school board and Superintendent Lennox for your efforts to end institutional racism at Mounds View School District.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll move to item 2.2, announcements. Shawna will acknowledge the gifts.
Yes, thank you, Jonathan. Total gifts for schools and programs received this period was $1,965.52. Total gifts received for the Ralph Reader Food Shell were $13,900. It is recommended that the board accept the gifts and extend thanks to the donors.
Thank you. Regularly announce upcoming meeting dates. The board does take the month of July off, so we will return to our work in August, but can count on some work in the interim over the summer as we prepare for the upcoming school year. We'll move to item 2.3, superintendent's report, which will include our annual Q-COMP report.
Correct. Thank you, Jonathan. I do have a bit longer report this evening because each spring, the state of Minnesota does ask us to provide an update on our Q-COMP program, and I will provide that tonight as part of this report. You might be aware that Mounds View Schools was one of the first three school districts in the state to implement Q-COMP. Today, it has been a very successful program for us, and there are five components to the program that I need to highlight this evening. The first is career advancement options, sometimes referred to as career ladder positions. And examples of these positions include the building instructional team members or our built positions, instructional strategies facilitators, our ISFs, and some of our content area specialists or CAS positions are also part of this group. In total, we have approximately 132 people in these positions, which is roughly 15% of our teaching staff. The work of these teacher leaders is an essential part of our PLC-based system, and the support they provide has helped us to improve both our practice as well as student achievement district-wide. This has definitely been a positive part of our culture. The second component I need to highlight is job embedded professional development. A key message here is that much of the professional development associated with this program is focused on in-district opportunities. Professional development is done by teachers for teachers. Now, that doesn't mean that no one goes out to a conference or outside of the district. Certainly, some of that happens. It's just not the primary focus of this program. An example is that professional development is embedded as part of our teacher development and appraisal process, or T-DAP process. As part of the PLCs, teachers have the opportunity to learn from one another on how to best use high-yield instructional strategies in their classrooms. Micro-teaching is another technique that our teachers have been using to learn and grow. For those not familiar with micro-teaching, at its core, it is a digitally-recorded lesson where highly-effective teachers model instructional strategies in a classroom. By recording the instruction, it allows groups of teachers to come together, watch the instruction, talk with their peers, ask questions, gather ideas, and then go back and implement that strategy in their own classrooms. I've been very impressed at how effective this technique has been in the adoption of best-practice strategies in our classrooms, and I want to commend our teachers for their commitment to their ongoing development. It's clearly having a positive impact. The third component of Q-COMP is teacher evaluation, and this is embedded as part of our T-DAP process. Appraisal takes place both at a team level or at the PLCs as well as for the individuals who make up the members of those teams. The benefit we see in this approach is that the work teachers are appraised on is directly connected to the work they're doing individually and collectively in their classrooms. The work of their PLCs is not seen as separate from the evaluation system. Rather, it's connected and integral to their work. A fourth component is the alternative pay system. The Q-COMP system includes alternative pay in the form of stipends for teachers, especially the teacher leaders, specifically the career ladder positions we talked about, which were the built ISF and CAS positions. Other components of the alternative pay system are included as part of a more comprehensive salary schedule. And the final component we're required to do annually is a general review of the program. And this year, we had 98% of our staff receive their alternative compensation as part of the program, and for probationary staff, it was 92%. Now, these are important numbers because the way our system is set up, there's no guarantee that someone's going to get all of the compensation. The program is designed so that every teacher will have the opportunity to earn full compensation, but again, no guarantee. And I think those percentages reflect the fact that the district has continued to maintain a high standard, which was set when the program was designed. It also demonstrates that there's an ongoing system of quality control that's working well. Overall, I want the board and public to know that Q-COMP is a successful program for our district, and it has been for many years. I believe the way in which it has been embedded into the work we do here in Mounds View is very complementary to our overall goals, and I hope the state continues to support the program into the future. Now, a couple additional items. I am pleased to announce this evening that the state of Minnesota was able to extend their application for summer meals, which means that we are now going to be able to offer both breakfast and lunch to our families this summer. This is new information, so some of the logistics are still being planned. But as of today, we know that we'll be able to do curbside pickup on Wednesdays. We're planning that right now at Highview Middle School. Meal bags will contain seven days' worth of both breakfast and lunch meals. So please stay tuned and watch for more information to be shared in the coming days. And finally, I just want to highlight that tonight is Carol Nielsen's last board meeting with us. Carol's been with our district the last 24 years. She's helped our district establish a strong financial position by providing oversight and stewardship of resources. Her leadership has been invaluable across multiple areas of responsibility, and I want her to know how much I appreciate all she's done for the district and wish her well in retirement. Thank you, Carol. And with that, I'll end my report.
Thanks, Chris, and I'm sure you stole many of the board members' thunder who plan to acknowledge Carol and her great work in our board member reports towards the end of this meeting. I'll take us to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. Do you entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move to item 4.1, final placement of certified staff on unrequested leave and invite Amy Jo Johnson to present.
Good evening, board. In your packet, you'll see that the school board took action at a previous meeting proposing to place a number of certified staff on unrequested leave for the 2021 school year. The individuals listed on this attachment did not request a hearing, so failure to request a hearing is deemed consent to the proposed action. Before I proceed, I just want to make note that the staff listed here are from ECFE, and our intent is, once we receive further guidance from the Department of Ed, once we understand our instructional model and our funding and our enrollment, our intent is to hire most if not all of these staff back to their positions or recall most of them back to their positions. So with that, it is recommended that the board adopt the attached resolutions placing the staff attached on the attachment on unrequested leave. Are there any questions regarding this?
Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll take us to item 4.3, 2020-2021 budget. And this will be the final presentation of the budget and action this evening, and we'll welcome Bridget Peterson to present.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the 2021 budget for Mounds View Public Schools. This budget was developed from work at many previous boardwork sessions and meetings. And this evening, I'll begin on page two of the summary budget document that you have in your packets. The total revenue projected and budgeted for all funds is $203,198,534. And the total expenditure budget for all funds is budgeted at $248,161,594. At the June 9 board meeting, we discussed the nutrition service, community service, building construction, debt service fund budget. So this evening, I'll continue my report focusing on only the general fund budget as there have been no other changes in any of those other funds as they were presented at the last meeting. I'm turning to page seven. The total budgeted revenues for the general fund are at $170,692,885. The total budgeted expenditures are at $168,360,469, which represents all of the assumptions that have been discussed over the previous month's meetings. This then leaves our unassigned ending fund balance to be projected at approximately $26 million, which, thanks to the successful levy, will bring us close to our fund balance policy. Turning one page to page eight. At the top of the page, you'll find the general fund revenues.
Bridget, can I ask a question on that prior page?
Yep.
I'm looking at what's page two. I think that's, it's numbered page two, but I think it's the budget summary, all funds.
Yep.
Yep. So I just have a question on that first line on general fund.
Yep.
How the expenditures are noted, and then it says note one. And then like, the notation under that is confusing to me.
Okay.
Because I think it's... Can you just explain that and then I will, I'll see if it makes sense to me?
Because it's unbalanced, you know, the revenue exceeds the expenditures, the remaining dollars will fall into fund balance.
Right. Okay, but the way the note reads, it seems the opposite to me. I think it's, the note says, "unreserved fund balance will provide resources for the general fund." I actually think it's the opposite of what you're saying is happening. Right? We're using, we're putting funding back into the reserve account.
Correct.
So I think that note is, reads...
And I could change it, Sandra, to reflect more clarity. Will that help?
Yeah, I think that's, I think we're stating it...
Backward.
Opposite, yes. Thank you.
I'll make a note and correct that before we publish it.
Thank you.
Yep. Were there any other questions on that page? Okay. Were there any questions on page seven before I moved to page eight? No. So I'm on page eight. At the top of the page or in the middle section of the page are the general fund revenues. And you can see these revenues the district receives are made up of various funding streams. If you look in the 2021 proposed column, you'll notice that approximately $99 million of our budget is from general education revenue or 58.5% of our total revenue budget. And then that special education revenue is approximately $23.7 million, which is almost 14%. But I wanted to highlight here that it's really important that what our legislature does with funding for schools is extremely important as approximately 72% of our revenue comes from these two funding streams alone, while the other 13% comes from levy referendum, and then the remainder comes from the smaller funding streams that make up our total general fund revenue budget. And then closer to the bottom of the page, kind of in the middle, is the expenditures for the general fund, and you can see that 75.6%, there are almost 127.3 million are made up of salaries and benefits. And so we are a very large people organization. And then the remainder of that expenditure budget, approximately 24%, is on other purchasing of services and supplies and so on and so forth. Were there any questions on this page? Hearing none. The remainder of this document and all the other funds, as I stated before, were presented previously. And so while there's a lot of details in this document, the back of this document does have some nice budget summaries on pages 22 through 25 that I would encourage you to review. This document is also or will be available on our website as well for individuals to review. And if ever anyone ever wants more information related to all the details that are in this document, all the information is available in the finance department for review as well. Are there any questions?
You know, I guess maybe I'd just like to, for folks who are listening in, I guess I'd just like to point out that it was part of our plan when we went to the voters last November and kind of outlined some of the needs that we have. Replenishing the reserve fund was a priority for us because we're getting to the point where we're below our own policy. So replenishing that fund is in line with what we have committed to do. And that rainy day fund is an important part for us to, you know, as we, especially now, moving into some uncharted waters, that rainy day fund is important. So I just wanted to point that out for folks who haven't been kind of tracking this for the past several months.
Thanks for that, Sandra. This is Jonathan. I think that's a really important note. I'd also just note, and I felt this way every time we've come to this moment as a board to adopt what is, you know, at this point, almost a quarter of a billion-dollar budget. And we hear a five-minute presentation and we move action pretty quickly. And I know Bridget has outlined the process, but I just really want to underscore the incredible work that has gone into preparing and really putting a microscope on this budget. The board has an opportunity over the course of several months to review each section of the budget in great detail in work session, to ask questions, to have the finance department and the administration come back to us with answers to those and really create this budget as a partnership. So what feels like a really quick process tonight is really grounded in months of time and energy and work. So I'd extend my thanks to the finance department, Bridget and Carol and others who helped inform this. I just also highlight that we've had a lot of time as a board to scrutinize this budget and get us to this point.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Any other questions for Bridget or the team before we move action on this? Hearing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to adopt the 2020-2021 budget as presented.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. And then I will note, I got so excited about the budget that I skipped over item 4.2, so we're going to revisit that item, termination of probationary staff, and ask Amy Jo Johnson to present.
In your packet, you will see that it is necessary to terminate contracts of a number of probationary staff listed in the attachment due to the uncertainty of funding. And I just want to point out that these are, again, from the early childhood family education program and due to the uncertainty of what the instructional model and enrollment's going to look like and that the probationary and contractually, we can't lay off probationary staff. We have to terminate their employment. But our intent, again, is to reinstate or rehire these individuals back to their positions once we receive further guidance. Any questions regarding the staff listed here? If there's no question, then it is recommended that the staff listed in this attachment be terminated pursuant to the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. That brings us to item 4.4, 2020-2021 enrollment update, and we will ask Carol to present her last enrollment update. And I'm going to steal your thunder, Carol, and tell everybody that the number she shares tonight will not be the number of kids that show up on the first day of school.
Thank you. You did steal one of my lines, but that's okay. So thank you. Yes, tonight is an enrollment update for your consideration as you look forward to another school year in 2021. So in your materials, you have a detailed enrollment update. This data was pulled as of June 17, 2020. And so if you look at the detail page, there's a summary in the bottom-right portion of the projections. Currently, our system shows that we've got 11,694 students projected for next school year. So that compares to the projected total of 11,632. So this is the number that was used as the budgets were developed and projected for next school year. So it's important to see how those two compare. And in addition, the projection is about 185 students greater than the number of students we had in the seats as of October 1 of last school year. So we continue to see our enrollments grow, which is always encouraging because that makes, from a financial standpoint, a lot easier to balance budgets and manage within the expenditures that you have to operate with. So again, we see, if you look at the left bottom corner there, by grade level, numbers from K to 12th grade remain very stable. As Hazel Reinhardt used to say, "Kindergarteners are your births and 12th graders are your deaths." So as you manage the inflows and outflows of enrollments, it's important to see how those two numbers differ because that's what creates the big fluctuations. So this snapshot, again, is for sure not the number that you will see come the start of school next year, but we will continue to monitor the data at multiple times through the month here. Both our principals and our administrative staff continue to watch this information very closely as we go through the summer months and into the fall. So look forward to some more data come early fall. Any questions?
I just want to comment, I was looking at the numbers and kindergarten numbers look, you know, quite a lot larger at this point than we had projected, particularly at the Pike Lake Kindergarten Center.
And what you're typically seeing there is we roll forward all of the data that we have from our early childhood programs, but we do not typically hear from our families when they leave our system. And so right now, what you're seeing is basically an inflated kindergarten number. So as kindergarten roundups and registration stuff goes on through the summer months, and they're not hearing back from families that still reside within our system, those get cleaned up, and so you will, I think, see that number come down probably closer to projections. But again, K numbers are a hard one to project. We use a lot of trend information to get at that number, so sometimes we are very close and sometimes we're a little off. So it's just one that you have to continually watch.
And are some of our processes different this summer because of COVID? I mean, you know, so many schools, everything was different. Like if, you know, whatever events or meetings or registration confirmations families used to get, you know, in person at school, they were transmitted differently. So I'm assuming that might impact our numbers as well and kind of the reliability of them.
Yep. So two things that I would note there is, one thing that our student enrollment offices do is they take this information, these addresses, and then they verify name and addresses against a mailhouse documentation. And so they can find out if families have registered with the post office forward addressing event. And so that's one way we kind of keep up with our information as best as we can. And then in addition to that, with the schools being harder to access, we have moved our enrollment system to an online enrollment registering system. And so we've made it a lot more convenient for families to make it a one-stop shop for enrolling. So normally, they reach out to their school buildings. We take a couple of key pieces of information, and then we turn on our student synergy system and ask families to go in and update all of their family information right online. So it, I think, has, it was extremely beneficial timing that we turned that on with our kindergarten enrollment back in January. But then as we came into the COVID time period, we decided to implement that for the rest of our new families entering the system. So hopefully, with those two things, we're trying to mitigate some of that variability. But again, yeah, keep looking at the data and verifying what you can.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's it for the report, and so we will, I'm sure, have many more numbers coming at you from some new staff when I have retired and taking a little easier.
That sounds great, Carol, and we will keep you posted on that number. Maybe this is the year where you predicted the number early on and the number of kids that show up.
Yeah.
That will move us to item 5.1, superintendent's evaluation. And in my capacity as the chair of the board, I will... That, that will move us to item 5.1 superintendent's evaluation. And in my capacity as the chair of the board, I will present on this this evening. We talk a lot about the work that we do as a board, being a governing body and a governance structure. And one of the things that that means is that we employ one individual and that's the superintendent. And we delegate and entrust him with the management and operations of the district and the system and rely on that partnership to carry out the work on behalf of this community. So it is our responsibility and our privilege as a, as a school board body to evaluate the superintendent throughout the year and to come to you as a community with a report on that evaluation. Folks are familiar with the district operational plan. It is the plan that we, you know, work together with the district administration on to develop a set of goals and objectives to work towards over the course of the year and to evaluate the superintendent and his team. We're provided updates throughout the year as a board. So regular updates at board work sessions as well as board meetings to provide updates to the community in five areas, meaningful family and community partnerships, healthy learning climate, high quality instruction, financial oversight and stewardship of resources and general competencies of the superintendent. Just a quick recap of our process, you know, at the end of the year, the superintendent prepares a report to the board that touches on the various aspects of the district operational plan and progress made towards those goals in the plan. Each board member has the opportunity to independently review that report and provide their own feedback. We then come together as a board in closed session and have a dialogue and conversation about our perspectives, about progress towards the plan. The chair and vice chair then bring that feedback to the superintendent. Diane and I had an opportunity to sit down with Chris in person last week to review that feedback, you know, respond to questions that he had as well as allow him an opportunity to share some additional updates and answer questions that members of the board had. And then we have the opportunity to report to the broader community as well as to the superintendent publicly. And that's where we are today. So I want to touch on a couple of high points. You know, this year ended in a way that I don't think any of us could have predicted when we adopted the district operational plan for 2019, 2020. We started our school year with student mental health and levy as really key priorities for our district. I can tell you that the levy was, was a success early on in November of last year. And it has already allowed us to make significant investments in student mental health and student mental health continues to be a key priority and will be moving forward. And the progress that was made as we pivoted towards distance learning and all of the challenges related to that pivot are to be commended by the administration, but also to recognize that we have significant work yet to do. I certainly don't want to gloss over really good progress made towards the plan. You know, items including our transportation contracts, our contracts with our employee bargaining units, as well as the facilities work that has just been a massive task to, to undertake. And at our last board meeting, we heard the five words that I actually now believe we love more than on time and on bud- on budget, which are ahead of schedule and under budget. So really great progress made towards a lot of the items that were put forward at the beginning of the year before the COVID-19 crisis. As we talked several weeks ago, you know, there was a massive pivot mid-year and we charged the administration with responding to the governor's executive order, the move to distance learning, and felt it was appropriate for us as a governing body to, to reflect that in how we evaluated the superintendent on the work of this year. What I can tell you is, you know, to a board member, we are grateful and impressed with the work that this administration team led by the superintendent did to migrate us to distance learning, to support our staff, to support our families, to undertake, you know, a challenge that I don't think anybody could have anticipated. A monumental task to move a system seemingly overnight. And, and they met that challenge and incredibly grateful and proud of the work that the superintendent did and that his team has done in, in the weeks that led us to the end of the year. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, you know, some of the, the things that are ahead of us. We are all still wrestling with and responding to the tragic murder of George Floyd and the impact that it has had on our cities and our region and our state and our nation. And certainly reflecting on the role that our institution plays. In particular, the response and the outreach we've received from our students and our alumni and our parent community and the tremendous work ahead. The year that we're putting behind us gives me incredible confidence and resolve that we have the team in place to, to lead forward, to listen, to learn, to adapt and to respond and to make the necessary changes to continue to be an exceptional resource for the Mounds View community. So Chris, on behalf of the, the Mounds View School Board and the community, I want to thank you for your leadership, your partnership over the course of the last year. And we look forward to the, the 2020, 2021 year ahead. With that, I will end my report and offer the superintendent a few minutes to respond.
Well, Jonathan, I'd just like to say thank you. Thank you to the, to the board. And this clearly, as you know, is a team effort. We have incredibly talented team here in the district and a very, very happy that we were able to work together to accomplish much of what was asked of us through the district operational plan. I do concur. The road forward is, as we look ahead, we're already planning and looking ahead into next year and the work that needs to be done. Appreciate all that's, that's happening and the feedback we're receiving. I think that will inform our work as we move forward to improve our schools and the experience for our, our students and, and this community. So thank you.
Thanks, Chris. That'll take us to item 6.1 updates. And we'll start with AMSD and legislative. Mr. DeMay? Did, did anything happen?
Oh, there's always something happening at the legislature. But I, we did not have an AMSD meeting since our last get, since our last board meeting. But the legislature did meet briefly in special session, most notably on our agenda. An education policy bill was passed. Once the governor signs it, it passed unanimously in the Senate, 117 to nine in the House. The new law clarifies contracts for fuel and transportation. It modifies district reporting requirements for dyslexia. A lot of new requirements on vaping instructions for middle school students, some smaller things like disposal of prescription drugs and some other screening issues and you know, little things like allowing different mechanisms, verify student age, age and that type of thing. So as I said, it, it passed, it was discussed in the legislature for, but it failed to get a vote last during regular session and it came back. So that was the thing of most interest. So thank you.
Thanks, Jim. We'll move to 916 in Ramsey County League. Mary Jo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, Ramsey County League, the local governments. I think you all have gotten a copy of the sixth newsletter. All the newsletters are available on the website. We tried to include a lot of great information about all of the cities and school districts in Ramsey County and links to their websites. There's also some stuff on a legislative overview and save the date for the July meeting, which is always at the same time of the month, July 10th on Friday morning. It's going to be another virtual roundtable discussion around COVID-19. We also are, we did get an invitation and we're thinking about, well, we're going to get together with Nicole Frehman. And she sent a request to maybe collaborate with her on sharing of information from the county and other entities in Ramsey County school districts and cities. So we're going to, the executive committee is going to be meeting with her. Also, I have asked Sarah to forward you some information from the 916 workshop that was last week. The first, it's Dr. Robin D'Angelo and it's on equity. If you don't have a lot of time, well, the second video is really about the book, which I don't have a copy yet. But I'd be happy to share with anybody once I do get it. You can see her website, but the, the first video, it's not very long, but I suggest if you have time to look at it, it's really powerful on equity and talks about racism and it's just very interesting. I, I really thought she was well spoken. I can't wait to read her book. So if you have a minute, please take a look at that. That's it.
Thanks, Mary Jo. That will take us to item 7.1, school board member reports, and I will open it up.
This is Heidi Danielson. I have a report from the Mounds View Schools Education Foundation. We completed our first capital campaign called Mission Star Lab, which is resulting in new technologically advanced star lab that the elementary school community will benefit from for decades in our district. We've also budgeted for the cost of the training for science specialists. And we really appreciate the support from staff, Starland Community Committee and the Mounds View Schools community that made that happen. Another brief update that we've approved our funding priorities for the upcoming school year. We'll continue to work to fund the music instrument program, providing instruments for use at all of our elementary, middle and high schools. The Equity Promise Scholarship Program will continue to fund Izzy's, the intentional social interactions that happen at all of our schools, inviting members of the community to come in and engage in meaningful conversation in each of our schools. And we will continue to fund scholarships towards Laurentian Environmental Center. And we recognize that the district leadership will assess the viability of these initiatives, initiatives in the months to come with the uncertainty of COVID still lingering over us. We may be asked to have some of our annual funding commitment directed to other priorities. And as always, the, the foundation is very open to that. One other brief update, the foundation's flagship fundraising event, which is called Rock the Schoolhouse and held in November each year, will be a virtual event. This year hosted on the same day as previously scheduled, Saturday, November 14th. Look forward, you can look forward to more details on how to participate and continue to engage in the foundation. So that's my foundation report. I do also want to take the opportunity to thank Carol. I've only been a member of the board for less than a year, but had the pleasure of working with Carol years ago. When I was involved with E-PAT, the Edgewood Parents and Teachers organization over there at Edgewood, and Carol came in and really helped us with our finances and helped us meet a lot of requirements for the district and was just wonderful to work with. So I thank you, Carol, for all your interactions with not just the board and the administration, but the way you interact with parents and others in our schools to, to make us a better organization. And I just hope that you, I know that you will enjoy your retirement and just thank you for your service to the community for all these years.
Thank you, Heidi.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to also say a few words to Carol. I'm sorry that we don't have an in-person meeting, Carol, but hopefully maybe later on that we can social distance at some patio. When I think of Carol, you know, I always think of, I've worked with Carol since I've been on the board, so over 20 years of even keel, of quiet confidence. And you can only have that if you're confident in your competencies. And Carol has that. She sees the big picture, but she knows all the details. I'd like to thank you for all your leadership as well as your willingness and patience, patience as you explain and clarify board members, the community, parents and students' questions. Particularly when people come to the board and it's something maybe more complicated, you always jump up, meet them in the hall and make a plan to meet them later. Let's see. So I really thank you. And most, most recently, you helped me in my new role on the Ramsey County League, and I really appreciated that. I know it took a lot of your time, but it made a difference to me. So congratulations and good luck.
I'd just like to-
Yep.
Off of that if I could. You know, I, I've worked, Carol, with you now for my entire time on the board, which has been just nine years actually as of this month. It has been, you know, you're, you're, again, the, the quiet confidence that Mary Jo expressed is exactly how I would describe how you have worked with us and with the community. I mean, I was trying to make a list of, you know, the, the levy renewals. I think it was two or three of them in this time. A 10-year, a 10-year operating levy that you worked with us in the community last fall. $165 million bond. And those, those, those issues that we bring to the voters, you're always so careful to not, you're, you're, you're very factual. You're presenting factual information and to helping voters understand what the issues that they're voting on. And I just think that you've been so incredibly fair and, and balanced in how you handle those, those requests. And I also think about the, some of the, you know, years, a few years ago, you were always finding, we always said, oh, here goes Carol. She's pulling more money out of the hat. We used to joke. You would come back with, you know, reissuing debt and would save us a lot of money. But you would identify opportunities to reissue debt, savings and utilities. You know, as, as Mary Jo talked about, your, your patience in working with citizens, and I think of all the truth and taxation hearings where no one really wants to come and talk to the board. They really have a question about the statement and how it, how it's calculated. And you always sat aside and had really great conversations with citizens and helped them understand a very complex property tax system in, in Minnesota and how to read the statements and how the schools portion aligns with that. So I just want to thank you, not just for what you've, how you have contributed to the cabinet and the leadership of the district, but really how you've, you've interacted with the community, like, like my, my colleagues have stated. So. I am so sorry to see you go. I wish we could be together tonight in person and, and have a piece of cake together. But I just want to, wanted to just spend a couple of minutes really underscoring the service you've provided to this community. And I wish you all of the best in your retirement.
Thank you, Sandra.
Sorry, Jonathan. Okay, thanks. I, Carol, I just want to say thank you. You have been wonderful to work with. I would echo the sentiments from the board members that have already spoken, but I just want to thank you for your patience because I think that you can take something that is very complex and you just have such a way of explaining it in an understanding manner. And I appreciate that so much. And I know others do as well, but I really wish you nothing but the best as you embark on this next chapter of your life. I hope you enjoy time with your family and friends and doing stuff that you love to do, which I, I know probably hasn't been a lot of all of, of your years of service. So thank you, Carol. You definitely will be missed.
I also just want to quickly say thank you to Carol. Just like everyone else has said, she's always so calm and so happy and can take super complicated things and make them very easy to understand. And thank you for helping me when we were doing levy presentations and people would ask me really complicated questions and I would just stare at them and not have any idea. And you were there to save me and, and again, really able to explain things in a way that people can understand. So thank you so much. And I really hope that you enjoy your retirement. So thank you so much, and I really hope that you enjoy your retirement.
Mr. Demay?
Yes, a few notes. A big thank you to Carol. I'd just like to reiterate what everybody else said. And, you know, financial stability and excellence and a strong financial position doesn't happen by accident. And so Bravo, Carol, for your fine work in making the school district sound financially over the years. A couple other notes, as we heard in the gifts, thank you to our community for being so generous to the Ralph Reader Food Bank. The outpouring from the community to me has been very notable. So thank you for that. I attended the Awaken the Suburbs March on June thirteenth. I march, I listened, I learned from our students and our alumni and on issues of equity. And, you know, I look forward to embracing some action items. Also, a big congrats to the Night Crawler's over at Irondale, who provided a lot of protective gear over at COVID. They ran hard past the finish line and just kept cranking out useful materials. So Bravo to them. And then in the mental health area, Mounds View students created a bandana project, which is students helping students in mental health. And they won an award from, award from the Pacer Center as a, for their good work in mental health. So Bravo to them. So thank you.
I'm going to wrap us up. I would like to also share my, my thanks and gratitude to Carol and my begrudgment to my board colleagues, who, as I've gone through my notes, I've had to cross out most of them because you've covered the great work that Carol has done. Twenty-four years, Carol. Since we're not together and you can't kick me under the table, I will share that I was a seventh grader at Highview when you started with the district and my wife was a fifth grader at Turtle Lake. Over the, over the arc of that time, my quick math suggests that you have attended almost nine hundred board meetings and work sessions and really been a counselor to this board. What most people may not know is one of the very first things when you become a board member that you do is you sit down with Carol. And Bridget alluded to this earlier today. You know, all of the details of the budget, that's a pretty expansive document. And Carol hands it to you and it weighs about seven pounds and it's spiral bound. And you turn a little bit white at the time because you feel this, this great responsibility to our community. And then you immediately know that you're going to be just fine because you are in incredibly capable hands. Carol, I echo the sentiments. You have been such an incredible resource to me, to this board, to this organization for nearly a quarter of a century. We are, our schools are better because of you, our community is better because of you. And I can tell you that I am a better leader and a better person because I've had the opportunity to work alongside you, to learn from you and to do this work together. I think we all share the sentiment that you are going to be exceedingly missed. But also incredible gratitude for the foundation you've laid and the way you have positioned our system for the future. So I too share my my celebration towards you as you head into retirement and get to enjoy this next phase of your life. Know that we will take the legacy that you have built here and we will, we will build on it and we are appreciative of it. I am going to, you know, if you're interested, allow you a minute or two to to share your thoughts before we wrap up the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Jonathan. You know, I'm a person of few words and so I can keep it short. First of all, I just want to say I really appreciate all your kind wishes. That's very kind for you to say all of those wonderful things. I've been fortunate to be a part of many great teams over the twenty-four years. And so all of that success has come because we've had some great teams working together to get that accomplished. And so it makes it work very enjoyable. And so I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you again. And I look forward to hopefully seeing you all in person somewhere, somehow. Thanks.
Likewise, and we won't ask you which school board has been your favorite, but we're pretty sure it's the one that's here tonight with you. With that, is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.
Thank you.